All right, well, good evening and welcome to our November workshop. Today is Thursday, November 2nd, 2023. It is 5:30 PM. We're in the central building, second floor conference room, and we'll begin with our staff spotlight. We have Susan Ressler and Brooke Hala here, and if you want to introduce.
Yeah, yeah, so thank you for, again, having the opportunity to continue our staff spotlight part of our work sessions. I think it offsets our board, you know, building and director reports during our regular meetings quite well to have, here's something that's happening in report format, but also have a chance to highlight some of the great work that staff are doing in our building. And so we're pleased to have our office manager team here tonight, some representatives of the group, to share a little bit of what they do and how that impacts the life in our buildings. And I know when I was graduating college and I was right, getting my first classroom, they said, make sure you make friends with the administrative assistant and the custodian. Those are your two best friends as a first-year teacher, so one really makes the building go from there. So Susan and Brooke, I turn it over to you to share some of your work.
Well, I'm Susan Ressler. I work at the Wasika Intermediate School. And my job is kind of organizing and maintaining a variety of tasks for students, parents, and staff. My office duties are kind of enrolling new and incoming students, also leaving students, making sure that process is complete, entering purchase orders as needed for staff, receiving invoices and items into our system, collecting and depositing money that comes in for field trips and activities, approving weekly substitute time cards, find teachers on call, coordinating field trips with transportation, facility requests as needed, and then create sign-up geniuses for the parent-teacher conferences. And then I back up the secretary when the office does get busy with any phone calls, any parents' needs, anything like that.
I'll kind of piggyback on what she said. The ALC does those things, but we're a one-man ship up there, so I'm the only one outside of Mandy that's in the office. So I do phone calls and attendance, too, and we're enrolling and syncing kids into schedules, and we run OpEx besters. So I'm enrolling kids and then syncing them into schedules, and we have like a population that comes in and out. So I don't know if your guys' population stays pretty steady, but we have students to come in and leave almost every hex. In the middle of hexes, we're doing enrollments, and we have to meet with the students for about an hour to get their continual learning plan, kind of do credit checks and decide what the plan for the next, like, we didn't have a guidance counselor, but we did just get one. So I'm hoping to kind of shove some of those jobs off soon, too. And then we have night credit recovery, too. So I enroll all the kids for night credit recovery, and I transcript all their grades, and the same for summer school. So when we have three sessions of night school, a lot of student contact up at the ALC, so there's a lot of students that get swing in and have a tough time, so it's kind of connecting them with a staff member or resource in our building that works best. And I'm Mandy's sidekick and assistant and run her calendar and help with her stuff, too.
It all depends a little bit on the size of the building, right? But at your building, who else is there with you? I know, obviously, the ALC with that number of students, it's you and Mandy. What does your office look like at WIS?
We have the secretary and then John, too, the principal, you know, so, but we also have, you know, the school counselor and the family service coordinator. You know, we all work as a team, which is awesome, and it makes a great school.
Health services?
Correct.
Part of your office?
Yes.
When there's a nurse on site?
Yeah. I'm a health tech, too. So I'm the health tech also at the ALC, yeah.
Very good, very good. Distribution of duties, then, depending on the size of the building, right? With that option there, too.
Yeah.
Very good. Good. Questions? Comments?
What's the most fun part of your day, generally?
It's just a variety of everything, working with the students, the parents, the staff, everything. You know, it makes the day interesting.
Definitely student contact is fun, yeah. You get to know the kids really well. We're a smaller group and smaller staff, so it's really tighten it up there. You have to work really close together. And if we have someone who's out, like, we have to find cover, so sometimes I'm in a classroom doing my job while we find someone to come in, or we rarely get subs. So best part of my job is the people.
What would be the hardest part of your job?
The people. The people, yeah. Sometimes when kids or staff are having rough, tough days, you have to be the calm in the storm.
You talked about being the right-hand person there with Mandy. I know that, I could describe this when I was a principal, my administrative assistant or office manager, whatever it's called in a particular district, right, is just crucial to success in the office. How do you support the principals in your work?
I do a lot of her schedule, so any of her enrollment scheduling, anything she needs help with, ever. So if she gets overloaded or overdone, I literally go through her tasks and see what I can take off. It's, you know, not admin-specific, but anytime I can deal with her schedule, any of her phone calls, doing any of her stuff, mailing stuff out, ACT stuff, lining stuff up, talking to the guidance counselors and parents. We have an intake form, and you have to review all of their credits, and so we didn't have a guidance counselor, so going through their credits and their credit checks, doing transcripts, taking that stuff off of her plate so she can deal with all the other stuff she does.
Yeah, and it's probably about the same. You know, it's if I'm busy and obviously, you know, the principal needs something, I'm going to drop that and do whatever that needs to be done with mailing or obviously the parent, teacher-parent conferences, you know, stuff like that.
Yeah, it's really a cohesive unit in the office. I know that, I had the opportunity to go through a training, it was called Breakthrough Coach, 10, 12 years ago, worked with the administrative assistant I was working at the time. We went for two days and worked on how we worked together, and really, it was very clear, the trainer was very clear that they're the boss. And they're going to tell me what I'm going to do throughout the course of the day, for the most part. And we do some of that here, not 100%, because it's a little overkill on what they could do, but we do a great job with our teams and our offices, and a big part of it. Other, I don't want to interrupt, other questions or thoughts?
Well, I suggested having people from the office come in, just because you guys are kind of the first face of our buildings, and we haven't had a chance to hear anyone from the office yet, so I appreciate you guys coming in and sharing a little bit about what makes your days go by really fast, I'm sure. And, yeah, thank you for giving some of your evening and coming and talking with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Done.
That's it.
That's it.
Easy. Tell everybody how easy it was.
Can't tell everyone.
When I ask their group, they come.
Well, moving on into our media discussion of the evening is, we're going to kind of do a deeper dive into our levy, not just our current levy, but the levy process.
Levy process, and I would say, thank you. And, you know, when Matt presented our preliminary levy in September, you had a pretty good chance to see, you know, what the numbers look like and why, and where we are for the 2024 pay levy. So we're going to spend some time tonight talking more about where do those numbers come from and why do, why is the levy what it is? What does that look like over time? I would say just miss some of the myths potentially about what the levy's used for and what it means as far as new money versus just different shift to where the funding comes from. So, and I kind of ran it through in a series of kind of an FAQ-type setup for this presentation. So I'll run through the presentation, but please stop me throughout for discussions and questions as you have. It's not really intended to be a, hey, slide A, slide B. It's just working through the questions, so please stop as you need to. And then we always can click into other things if we need to or get other information for you. But reminder that the truth in taxation meeting is scheduled, is it the 21st? The 20, 20, it's the board, regular board meeting, the 20th or 21st in December. Remember what that date is, 21st?
21st.
Yeah. So that'll be the truth in taxation hearing. That'll be when you actually formally will approve the levy at that time. And so you'll have a chance to obviously make comments or ask questions now and then as well. So what is-
Just remember, that one starts at 6 o'clock.
Right.
So it can't start here.
Very good, very good. So proposed pay levy for 2024. So it ended up being just slightly different than what we had in September because of a few things that changed with some of the enrollment numbers that we were looking at. The total levy, just over $5 million for the payable 2024. It does represent an increase of just over $240,000 from the year prior, or about 4.7% increase. This is important to think of when you look at what this looks like on your property tax statement, that you have to look at the school district portion of your total property tax. So you would obviously, you would not be looking at the city portion or the county portion, or the, if there's a separate portion for like the bond for the school district, that part doesn't, is not impacted by this. This is just your basic school property tax. The 4.7%, 4.71% represents the total levy increase percentage, so 241,000 up to 5.3 million dollars for that. The actual change to a property could be slightly different. So keep in mind that your particular tax may not be exactly 4.71%. It could slightly differ based on your valuation, classification of your property, how that is determined by the county assessor and by the state formula. One of the things I wanted to highlight here, and Grant, you could pass this around for us, is I wanted to highlight that this levy is really something we need to look at in a multi-year process. If we look at it in a snapshot of one year, it sometimes can be challenging to think about what's the comparison between ourselves, between our local partners, between what we did the year before. So when you think about it over the last five years, I just want to point out that we've increased just about 7 3/4% over the last five years, an average of just over 1.5% per year. So in 2019, the total levy was just under $5 million. Now we're at, you know, about $5.36 million. And I say that because oftentimes the newspaper or the media will, they'll just publish what's happening this year. And so you talk about, if you go to the next slide, talk about where we sit when it comes to other local entities here in our area, and we look at the city of Wasika and the county of Wasika, and where they have been over the, over the last five years compared to where the school district is. And I put this up for one purpose, though, and the sole purpose is to say that we have to be cautious when we compare ourselves on a one-year snapshot to other entities, because if you look on your sheet here, I showed you, the proposed 2024 obviously looked quite low for the county and the city, but when you look at that five-year trend, that's certainly probably making up for some dollars that, you know, they have chosen to levy in years prior. So it's just something to think about when it comes to the comparison factor for that. The other thing, too, any questions on this? I'll get to the back and forth a little bit of the school district one here in a moment, too.
Question, what was the amount that we, you proposed, like, in September?
At that time, it was like 4.15, so it went up like $23,000, honestly, is that rough? Around $25,000?
Yeah, that was, yeah. It was about 4.5%, I think, at that time.
Yeah, good, okay. So go to the next slide, then. So how is the levy determined? Okay, so this is another significant difference between the city and county levy and the school district levy. The school district levy is based on district data put into a state formula. So Matt and the team, by usually right around the end of August every year, are required to submit information about demographics, the academic programming, school age care, unemployment, all the things that go into that, that you remember seeing in September, on the relevant descriptors of the district, okay? And then the state formula, which is about 38 pages of spreadsheets, it's something, let me tell you, comes out with, here's what your total, for each level levy category it's going to be, but then also, here's what your total levy should be. That is significantly different than the city and the county. The city and the county look at their projects, they look at how much money they need to operate going forward, they create their dollar value. The state formula creates our dollar value. So, again, it doesn't mean that it's right or wrong, it's just different. So it's important to understand that we're not sitting here as a school board looking around saying, we think it should be this amount. The state really is determined of that, because the majority of data is determined by enrollment and required programming, and they're really not at our discretion. So we don't necessarily get to control our average daily membership, how many students are here. We don't get to control how many employees file for unemployment, those sorts of things, which is part of some of the levy process. We have students that might enroll in our school age care program that need special education services that we're provided, required by law to provide. Those are some things that we are working on and that they come into the levy. So the key drivers have changed. So why is it different year to year? Market value of the property is, if not the primary, one of the biggest drivers of the levy change, and it impacts in two ways, which is really, makes it especially intricate. And the first is that there's a ratio of state aid versus property tax, and the state formula calculates, and it's different depending on each category, so I can't tell you it's X percent to this percent, but the higher the level of the home and the average property value in your community, then the state aid lowers, and they're expected the local property owner to pick up more of that. That's a Minnesota state funding mechanism, not ours. In addition to that, if your property value increases, you may be compared to the rest of the community paying more than your neighbors because of the value of your home. So it technically could get you in two different ways by that market value adjustment. If your entire community adjusts up, then maybe you're paying the same amount more, same as your neighbors do from an increased standpoint, but not necessarily house by house, you can't make that, I couldn't say that for sure. So that's how, that's the biggest piece. Enrollment in community population is a big piece of it, too. So if our levy is a certain dollar value per pupil times 1,700 students, if that's tax, if that's distributed among 6,000 rooftops versus 10,000 rooftops, that's a significant difference of what each community member needs to pay. And so that's part of the, how enrollment in community population impacts the levy. Also, some of it that could impact the levy is some of the projects that would require immediate attention, that for, the fire marshal might come in and say, we need to make this adjustment, or you have this asbestos project you need to abate. Most of those, at this point, are mitigated and taken care of, so it's not something you've seen year over year, the last several years, on our levy. That is why, actually, that's the biggest reason why we've had some dip and up the last couple of years, just one year there was a project, the next year there wasn't. And then now this last year, property values is a big part of it, too. And then the actual cost of programs that were flown range does make a difference. So we put in what we think the unemployment rate is going to be based on past data and experiences and all the trend we have, and then if by chance they, more people are eligible for unemployment in that particular year, then it costs us more. And so the levy's going to then increase the following year to help to basically break even with the district, when you look at it that way. And those aren't things we can always control. This year, we had a pretty good-sized back payment of unemployment, because they did not distribute all the unemployment during the COVID time, they didn't bill districts during unemployment during COVID, and now they're catching up with some of that, which we knew was coming, but what can you do other than just you pay the bill in that piece? Go to the next slide, Matt. So does the levy ever decrease? It does. You know, it's probably rare in the big scheme of things, but yes, it does go down from time to time in individual categories as well as the overall levy. So the levy that we're looking at right now for pay 2024, other post-employment benefits or retirement benefits for our retirees actually are decreased based on the prior year's actual cost, and we had less school age care disability expense in the last year than was estimated. So those are actually going down categorically for the next pay year, which, in this case, decreases the overall increase that we have for next year on the entire levy. And then in recent years, in the last five-year span that I showed you, we did have two years that decreased, you know, almost 4% in 2021 and almost 2, just under 2.5% in 2023. Again, it's not a house-by-house example, but the overall levy did decrease that much. So it does go down when the dollars aren't needed. Go to the next one there, Matt? Yeah. So, and this, I think, is probably the most telling slide for our community and for everybody to understand, is that entire increase, new revenue for the district, it's not. In fact, very, very little of it is actually new money that we could use to do whatever we choose to do with. The state formula is shifting the burden in a lot of ways from the state aid to the local levy, but that district revenue per pupil doesn't change. So our base, so the base general fund, $724 per pupil, remains $724 per pupil. The state has just decided, because of property market values, to shift it to the levy versus the, versus state aid. And that's the big piece of that. So for us, that's 150,000 of that pay 24 increase. And in some funding categories, basically, the levy is breaking even the district's actual cost. So Matt just talked about this briefly in his September presentation, but the levy is really a three-year cycle. So you must have to take every levy in a three-year cycle and realize that year one, we're submitting, like, I'll use the example, in year one, we're submitting what our unemployment cost estimates would be for the next pay year. You know, year two, we're actually incurring the actual cost, and then year three, the levy's adjusted as needed to make it, to make it whole. And so we're consistently in this three-year cycle with the levy. And over a three-year period, the district is whole in theory, but it's not additional revenue just to be used for this, as the district chooses. It's assigned to those particular categorical areas. And in some air situations, like I said, they may include dollars that are pre-allocated for health and safety projects. But, so very little of that, of that increase, unfortunately, is any new revenue for a school district, and so I think that that's a challenging concept to understand, because it feels like we're paying, well, we are paying more, it's not even feels like it. Reality is, we're paying more in our property tax, but the district really isn't seeing any more, any more revenue to do anything with in that particular time.
Would a package say that the state is actually paying us less, though, so they're seeing a savings that we're now paying?
Right. Yeah, that's, which, for years, legislative committee members know this, for the last several years, there's been a lot of tax equity conversation at the state, because, you know, property-rich communities have a significant advantage here. If you have 50,000 households in your community versus 9,000, it's a significant advantage to you. Yeah, you have more students and the levy's going to be higher, but still distributed more. So, yeah, but the state, the state, yeah, the state pays less, that's the bottom line to that.
For the health and safety projects, is that all, that's part of our long-term facility maintenance plan, is that correct? And it's just in our schedule? Or can you explain what, because I know sometimes we choose to levy for a project, sometimes we choose to push, put that off, like, can you explain a little bit more about-
So some parts of the LTFM plan, some pieces, at times, and Matt might need to help me out with this a little bit, some pieces of the LTFM plan are eligible for health and safety, for levy dollars, not all.
Okay.
And so when there's parts of the LTFM plan that can be accessed through this levy, then we, you know, we put that in and we do that more often than not, because then it supports other LTFM dollars. But it's not every project. It's usually something that, it used to be called health and safety funding, fire marshal, you know, yeah, OSHA-type things, those kind of things, and now it's more of asbestos, that kind of stuff. And most of that's adjusted for in most districts now, because if it's hidden and contained, it's no longer something that we would want to do with that funding. Summarize that okay or not?
Yeah, that's pretty much it. Yeah, you have to hit a certain dollar threshold, and then at that point, you can access additional dollars and without having to go for voter approval for those big projects that just need to happen. But as long as, and you can choose, like, if you're really close, because this is 100,000 we're talking about, because I know that asbestos was right there when you guys were dealing with it, you could either go with just your pay-as-you-go, normal revenue, or you could levy. So it's kind of that give-and-take. Now, of course, if it's $2 million, those are the ones that you see kind of pop up more where people are levying or bonding against it and then levying, you know, to pay it back, so.
There seems to be a lot of moving pieces here.
There are, there are.
So how is, how are property values determined? I mean, you said the assessor does that, but how do they determine what your property levels are, you know, or what your value is? You know, you might have, you know, I know there's some lake, some lake properties that have jumped $200,000 in the last year. What does that impact? How does that impact, you know, and then there's the mill rate. How's the mill rate fit into this whole scheme?
Yeah. Well, I'm not an expert on house value assessment, but what I can tell you is that there's a, two years ago, when we started seeing this in Wasika, I had a conversation with our county assessor, and the short explanation was, there's a percentage point that they have to stay in, what's called market value of the home, based on home sales and property sales, that they have to be within, and if your average home value is falling outside of that, like, it's 90 to 105% or something like that, if they're falling out of that, then they are expected to increase the valuation of the home. So when we add such a housing shortage that drives up the cost of houses, that's going to then throw that off and almost force the county's hand somewhat, but I'm not an expert on valuation with that, but that's how that works.
I think the state kind of dictates that, too.
Okay.
So the state has been putting pressure on Wasika County to adjust the market values of property to, within reason, like you were saying, that 90 to 105%.
Hanging low and just at the bad, just unfortunate for us, because we're low, everything jumps so high so fast.
Correct.
That it made it that much more noticeable for us.
Right.
But that doesn't change the levy, is the amount of, that is the amount of money that we collect from property values, does that-
So the levy is the amount that we collect in property tax, right? But the money we collect per pupil doesn't change, it just, it slides, whether that's coming off local property tax or state aid, that's how that changes.
So as our property taxes have gone up, the state expectation is more of our levy will come, or more of the, the cost per pupil will come from the property owners versus the state?
Correct. Correct. Yep.
Do you know if, and this maybe we don't know, that shift of state-provided funding versus saying, no, local needs to provide a funding? I know the city and the county don't have all those formulas, if the state drives them, but does that, does a similar thing happen for city and county taxes, where the state says, we're going to give you lots of money, so you have to go locally to get it?
Again, not expert on city and county funding, but I will tell you that I was at a meeting last week with, or week before last, with our city administrator, speaking with the House Representative Committee about needing some funding for a project for the city, that if they don't get it, they'll have to think about how they'd have to locally fund that. And as I understand it, and again, I'm not an expert on this area, but as I understand it, their levies are more based on operational costs and projects they want to do that they kind of determine and work through with their city administrator or their county administrator, as opposed to this whirlwind of a three-year cycle we work with.
So now I know that other districts get more per pupil than certain other ones. Now, with that, does the state, so the state kicks in more per pupil, so, at certain areas, so then that leaves that area of how much they got to kick in from local.
So, so some districts do a voter-approved levy on top of, on top of the minimum. They do, and that's in a couple of slides from now, I'll talk to you about that. And then, so, yeah, it does take the burden off of that somewhat, so that would, if they, does a voter-operated levy, does a voter-approved levy generate more state aid?
It can, but I was actually talking to a gentleman today up at the conference, and he said, there's very few districts now with just the current situation that are getting any type of state aid equalization against an operating referendum, and he said, by next year, it'll probably be zero. So just with this continuing property values and other factors, there's very little equalization.
Yeah. The state aid, determined by what your, what your value, you know, your value of a certain house, and say, Wasika, Wasika's houses were so much, and Mankato's were so much, would, does the amount of money, the state aid come, does that vary because of different property or levels of property in a particular-
It does, and to complicate things further, this is a separate category than the state aid we get, that's like the 7,000 per pupil that we get as the regular state aid, this is a separate discussion from that. So, yeah, yeah.
Would this be right, the city and the county have more freedom to set what they feel they need to collect from taxes, where the school, it's more what the state is giving you?
That would very much be my perspective, however, I don't know that I feel under record-
Okay, so-
I don't have to live with pressure, those are the-
Correct. Correct me if I'm wrong. If the city feels that they legitimately, or the county feels that they legitimately need more money, they can tax more to get that money.
I'm sure there are parameters they have to work under, again, I don't know that off the exact-
Okay, but if a, but if a school feels that they're not getting enough money, they have to go to the public for a vote.
Yeah, you're a couple of slides ahead of me. Yeah, you got it.
Okay, so it's almost the same- Okay, so it's almost the same.
Your question, Dave, sorry to interrupt. You're saying if we want more than that 4.7, what, where do we cut that up?
We have to go to the public for an excess levy referendum. Where the city and the county don't have to. I'm not saying they do, I'm just saying, again, it's not, it's just like with bond issues, it's not a level playing field.
So here's where we're going with that, Dave. So a couple of other questions here, so how much, just FYI, forever, it's about 8% of our district's revenue is what the levy comes from, so it's, it's, it's the most locally impactful part of our budget, right? It's what gets people writing their property taxes, right? But it represents an 8% part of our, our budget. And then, could a district choose to levy less than that formula recommends? They could. They certainly could, but then they would forfeit state aid. It's, it's attached to the program, you know, funded by the levy, so, determined by a ratio. So if you lower your levy, you lower the state aid that comes with it. And I have, I can't say never, because you never say never, but I've rarely seen a, a district do that, because it just, then the dollars don't add up over the course of your three years, you, I have seen districts choose not to do a project that they said, well, maybe it was going to be on next year, is there something, we don't have that for this current one, anything that's on there? Like, we talked about that Bateman project a couple of years ago, that should we do this or should we not? I've seen districts do that, but I haven't just said, we're going to take less money and forfeit some of that state aid. So then to your point, Dave, can the district just levy for more revenue? Not without voter approval, we can't. So that's our, that's our, our base minimum is at $724 per pupil, is what it is. And that's called, it's called local optional revenue, and that's the maximum that the school board can approve without voter approval for excess. If the district needs additional funds for some, if they feel that they need to operate effectively, they would need to have a referendum election to request those additional dollars. And something that I always, I always like to use, it's, it's very simplistic, but it helps me remember, helps me remember a lot, levies are for learning and bonds are for building. And so, if we've been talking a lot about facilities and we're talking about a bond project, as a, as one of our many options we're talking about with facilities, that's a building project thing. That's, they're not the same purpose. And so a levy would be for operating, for your instruction, for basically just needing more operating costs. That's why it's called an operating referendum, if you ever need that, for that option. So, we could do that.
So it'd be accurate to say, we have a proposed $5.3 million levy with 240,000 increase. If we said, let's not do the 240,000 increase, let's leave it at 0%, that would be $240,000 less funding for next year, plus probably some additional less funding because the state aid would also be reduced. So it'd be less, we would save our community 240,000, but would actually get even less than that.
Yeah, the actual number, I couldn't tell you, but yeah, it's, it would be that type of, type of challenge. Yeah. So staying with that option, again, that's not something we've talked about as, and it's not something we've, you know, we've talked about as, as a district. But if you go to the next slide, you know, how rare is it that we don't have a voter-operating levy, approved operating levy? And just a couple of facts with that, 70% of the districts in the state of Minnesota do have a voter-approved levy. Of the districts that do, the state average is an extra $878 per pupil.
An additional.
An additional to what they're, what they're already doing. Now, that's, which, so you think about that times 1,700 students, what that would be for additional revenue for us. Now, that being said, these are all, a lot of, when, what you can look up and you can find online is the per pupil levy, the tax impact to a property owner would be really hard to find out without digging into their particular needs, because we highly depend on the population and the distribution of values. You know, a big community could probably raise an extra several hundred dollars per pupil, a lot easier than a small community could. So, you know, that's why it's different in many different districts, because so, it's, it's very dependent on the property value and the population, but they're all listed as per pupil revenues, and so it's something to think about with that too. And it's just something to be aware of. Again, that's not something we're proposing right now for Wasika Public Schools, but it's something to, when you think about, what's the district deciding to versus what we, we, we could consider, what we, what other districts consider, something to think about. If you click either, okay, go ahead, Grant.
The fact that we are in the 30% who don't have a voter-approved levy means that you're spending less than the, the 70% and asking less of it.
Right, right. And it's, it's, and it wouldn't be fair, if, I think I actually have the window open, if you, go to the slideshow and click either a tab. There you go, perfect. And just local, just as an example, locally, here's who does have that voter-approved operating levy locally. And so you see that, that us, New Richland and Medford would be the local districts that don't have a voter-approved operating levy on top of their 724 already that they're levying for. And so, and the asterisks mean that those are actually CPI indexed to, to inflation. And so that 700 for Blue Earth area, that was the first year base, and now it's indexing by inflation as it's going up, they build that in every year. So those asterisks are there. So you can see that locally, it ranges all over the place for what districts are able to do based on the support they have in their community, based on what their needs are, their operating needs are. And so, and we, and we present this as part of the conversation, again, not something we're proposing at this moment, but something just to be aware of when you think of what our overall ask is of our community with our levy is compared to others. That's kind of what that looks like for that. I mean, we, we've seen the bar graph of what our, what our average tax is on a $200,000 home for our various communities. So I want to say that some of those communities that have, have one are still less than us total tax. So it's, again, it's not necessarily, I'm not, this is not impact on taxpayer automatic, but it's, it just is what it is when they think about what they have to work with for dollars. I think JWP might be one of them, that, that is either at or near what our tax is already, but theirs is, is, they get that per pupil, less pupils, but, yeah.
I heard of your Mankato, so you may be able to fill me in or correct me if I'm wrong, but I heard some information on the proposed bond for the-
Yeah.
Next week, right?
Yep.
About the facility, the athletic facility?
Yes.
Isn't there a question?
That's a second, that's a second question.
15 million or something like that? If it passes, it will only affect, and that's for east and west.
Correct.
It'll only affect a household roughly on that, what, 200, 250,000 basis, $2, $2.50 a month?
Yeah.
If it passes.
So.
That shows just the large volume of Mankato and Wasika difference in bonding availability.
Yeah. Yeah, when I was looking at, when I was looking at our $36 million idea, there, it was 115 million was their total asking both questions. And the impact was about 150% more to our taxpayers for 36 million than it would have been for that community for 115 million, to, just to your point. So it's just the, the volume of the household rooftops you have in your community makes a big difference. And so this is, can be misleading if you don't look at it really carefully. So I'm not, you have to be conscious, that doesn't mean necessarily that JWP is paying that much more than we are. It just means that's something that they're accessing as part of their formula. So.
I also just want to say, I think, I think that this is really interesting in that I feel like our district provides a lot of programming and, and learning for our levy, for our levy dollars, and it's, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I think that's good that we, that we do what we do with, with the revenue that we have. So I don't know, I don't know, really have a comment more than that, but this, and I just think that, that these numbers are really, are interesting in comparison, so.
The comment that will, the, the place this will stretch us, or, or we will be probably running into a pinch point a little bit, and negotiation team members can, can speak to this, that, you know, districts that have a little extra dollars per pupil have sometimes a little more flexibility in their salary schedule. And as we, if we, if we get behind, which we're not, but if we get that way, then we, we run into potentially down the road, thinking what that could look like for us. But again, not something proposed right now, it's just, when you think about, what, what does the total levy look like? I thought it was interesting, I, important stuff to add, is what that could look like for us. So, yeah. I think that was the last slide I had of information, yeah.
Does Mankato have an operating? And what, and what, how much is that?
Way off the top of my head, I would, I, I'm thinking it's like $800 per pupil, but I'm, don't quote me on that. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm going to ask kind of a dangerous question here. If the state came to you as superintendent of schools in Wasika and said, and maybe Matt too, and said, we're thinking about making some changes in how we fund public schools in Minnesota, what would you ask for, what would you want them to do? I guess in a perfect world, which we know doesn't exist, but.
If, if I stayed in reality, if I stayed in reality and didn't say, just open the checkbook, but in reality, tax equalization would be very, very important. It is going to be important, it's going to be helpful, because we talked, our conversation from a few minutes ago, the number of rooftops in your community should not impact the quality of education your kids get when they live in that community. And right now, rural school districts are getting quite challenged with the funding because they just don't have the rooftops to pay for.
Mother.
Yeah. Right, exactly. And so that, for me, would be the biggest thing, I don't know what you would say.
I guess I would just say, less, less dollars that have strings attached. You know, every, everything they've given us, even this new legislature, which was, you know, it was a total, when you look at it, just on the revenue side, it is an increase, but everything had something tied to it, you know, you've almost got it spent before you even get it in your, you know, your coffers. So just, just increase the funding formula and let us, you know, operate how we see best.
Local control.
I'd agree, both of those, yeah. I do want to highlight what you said earlier, that this local levy is 8.3% of our total revenue budget. So it's, I mean, it's an important part, but I mean, what, what are the general, I mean, so we get federal state, we get federal aid and we get state aid, is where, is where the rest of it's coming from.
Most of it, yeah, the state aid roughly 70-ish percent in any given year, and federal is usually around the 16, 17?
Yeah, I mean, COVID's kind of skewed that lately, but.
And then the other, the other option, the other revenue sources would be like, they call it just local revenue, like your, your gate sales and your activity fees, and it's pretty minimal, right? Those are the things that come in too for that, so. Yeah. That state aid, that 7,000 per pupil plus this category, that category, this category, that category, that's 70% of your revenue. This being part, other part of it. Sound good? Thank you. So, and we will set aside some time because we know that the truth in taxation meeting is the regular meeting in December. And so, are we thinking maybe the auditor will be here for the, for the work session? We're not sure yet.
I haven't heard back, I did throw it both December.
We're asking that, but we also will set aside some time for the December work session for the board to talk through our proposed levy again in another time, in case there's any more questions you have before the actual vote date later in December.
Any other questions or comments? Just want to say, I think every year we have a levy discussion, and every year I learn something different, but it's, it's one of the important roles of the board, is to approve the levy every year. So I, even though if we repeat information or not, I mean, it's, it's, it's a good discussion to have every year.
Well, I think, when I was preparing for this and I was pulling some of the statute, statutes up, and almost every one of them had a little asterisk next to it, changes in 2023, changes in 2023, so you almost have to do it every year.
Yeah.
Just thinks, I mean, that's what Maz, that your, a lot of your conferences this last two days, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and one last illustrative point, I think, that big document he alluded to, the, when I started in this field, it was 28 pages long. I think we're hit the 41-page mark this year. So just, you know, 10 years, it's almost, you know, gone up 10 pages, it'll probably keep going.
Well, thank you for that discussion, so. Our next topic, Eric just wanted to give us kind of an update on our partnership with Southwest Metro and kind of explain how that program is going and some thoughts on the future, so.
Briefly, one thing I should always add with this conversation, is anybody has any questions about their levy amount, their, their property taxes, how it works, please reach out to myself or Matt, we'll get you set up, any community members with conversations. There's information on the website, but, you know, if you ever want to have a quick 10-minute conversation about it, please encourage the community to reach out to us, we'll have that conversation.
Can you send us these slides that you had?
Sure. Very good. So Southwest Metro is a, a program that we have here in this building, and, you know, based on some conversation earlier this school year, I wanted to just give you kind of update of what that's about and how it looks. So what is Southwest Metro? So Southwest Metro, and they occupy the wing down here to the east in our building, next to the cafeteria and gym. It's an independent school district, so it runs itself as its own school district, has a superintendent, has administrators. It's intermediate school district, 288 is the number, and they operate as a special education district. And so what they do is they, they solely provide special education services for, for districts. Districts that don't have their own, their own opportunity to have some of those services. It's different than like our special education that we have for our regular setting kids that we share with our three districts, that's our programming. So this is just programming for districts that maybe don't have the level to go as high as, as they do here. So that district serves students receiving setting for special education services. So that's 100% of a student's time being in a special education classroom. So the entire day, a student needs to be in special education services. And it's, there's usually a need for some sort of therapeutic program or some sort of mental health support or significant health support for students to be in setting four. We have what's called setting three programs in our buildings that we run also that are, the students are in the, in the special education setting most of the day, but not every minute of every day, and they don't oftentimes need these, these, these therapeutic supports and some of these health supports. It's not designated necessarily by definition for students with a specific disability. Any student with any disability could reach the level of need to need setting four programming. Typically, it's going to be your students with significant emotional behavioral disorder disabilities, students with autism spectrum disorders, students that have significant behavioral needs or mental health needs are typically the students who get to that level where they need that extra support with that. And we provide those services in a variety of settings, combination of settings. So Southwest Metro does have its own buildings. They have some sites, and they have a site in Jordan, they have a site in Chaska, and then the big buildings that, that operate with some services up there, and we do send students from here to there, both places, students are bused there, depending on the age level, because they do serve students K-12, which is, is somewhat eye-opening sometimes when you think you might need a first grader or second grader with this level of support, but at times you do. That's, that's what's important to think about, is we can provide them support they need. They have a site within a member school district, that's kind of what we have here. We have a site right here in, in our district that's, that's, that's available to us. It is very rare, and we'll talk about this in a few slides, it's very rare for that site to be attached to another K-12 site. We're, we're quite unique in that, in that area in our school district, that we have it attached to a regular, another, another building that serves students of another grade level or program. But that's the way it's been set up here and, for a number of years in Wasika. Online instruction, they have elevate online program that students can do. Oftentimes, that's a challenge because accountability for students to get kids done, to get the work done is hard, but they have the option. And they also have what's called homebound instruction, which, homebound instruction is not homeschooling. Homebound instruction is the student is at home and a, a teacher goes to the home and provides special education services for a student for a certain number of hours each day. And it's, because it's one-on-one in that setting, it's not, not a teacher there for six hours a day, it's usually they provide it for an hour, 45 minutes a day for three times a week or something like that. So homebound instruction is another option that we utilize with that. So, what, what does that look like? Well, when IEP team determines that, a setting four is appropriate for a student. So this is not something that a student can just come to us and enroll and say, I'm a setting four kid, I'd like to be in Southwest Metro. Or the parent could say, you know, my student has been having challenges, I think they should be in setting four. Or a teacher could decide, you know, the student is having some challenges, I think they should be in setting four. None of that can be made in isolation or arbitrar, or unilaterally. The IEP team decides how that needs, the needs are for a student. So they enroll in Southwest Metro, which means they are enrolled in a, usually they're enrolled in a, in another school district, so they're not Wasika Public School students at that time. So all the funding and all the resources that go with that go to the other district that's serving them at the time. And the funding around Southwest Metro. Sometimes if they're, if they're still receiving some of our services, then we'll do tuition billing, or they'll, they'll, they'll stay our kids and then they'll just, they'll bill us for that. We bill them for use of our building, they do pay, they do lease that space from us in terms of being able to use ours, just like a head, it's almost same as ranging a head start in that opportunity. Of course, then they, they do then distribute that cost to the districts that have settings, but then that's, that's shared between all the, all the districts that have students in the program. in the program. It's our four member districts plus, I think right now we have two Tri-State United students who are part of the Wasika site. I'm not sure if they're onsite or if they go to the Jordan location, but that's how that works. So Wasika, JWP, Nerhag and WEM were, were what's called associate members of Southwest Metro. We receive all the benefits of being a Southwest Metro member. We, we meet monthly with their leadership, we have their, the conversation about what's working, what's not, what's the budget look like, what we have going on for next year. They have their own administrator and they do have a administrator in the program, so we hear from her regularly. But we, the, the difference is if we would choose to become a full member, it would just cost us some more time and being at some more meetings and, but there's no need, there's no, be no further program advantage for us, so this is perfect. It works out well for us. There are some advantages. There's, there's not always sufficient numbers of students to have a district program. And, and so what happens then is that students are in your building. They're in your, they're in your building, they don't just go somewhere else magically. They are, then they're being served in your setting three programs or they're being served in their regular classrooms and really struggling. When I was a principal in, in Albert Lee, there was no setting four program available for students, so the setting three programs that were in my elementary school were pretty severe behaviors, pretty severe issue because we didn't have any place else to serve those students. And so you don't, they don't just get to go somewhere else. So it's advantage to have your students to have a program to work with. We also get to keep students local, so you have waiting lists by doing it this way. You know, it's a little more cost effective to have students locally on the transport everywhere, everyone somewhere else. You know, you start getting places where you have to send some kids here, some kids there, some, it's, it can be challenging for us. So there are advantages to the partnership with that.
For the Southwest Metro that's here in this building, how many students attend that?
Currently on the list, I think I looked at the enrollment, there was 24 on the list. I think last I heard.
And those 24 are JWP, Nerhag, WEM and Wasika's?
Two Tri-State United kids, I think.
How many are from the Wasika Public School District?
Last I checked, like 13.
So half.
Half, yep. And of those 24, I want to say less than eight are regularly onsite. So that's the total enrollment. Some are going to Jordan, some are going to Chaska, some are on homebound. In the last couple of weeks, there was only four or five kids here.
Okay.
On any given day. So it just depends on.
What's the grade level for the kids that are, for this program? Is it, is it K-12?
It's K-12, but I don't think we have any students that are younger than maybe fifth or sixth grade right now.
But it could be.
But it could be.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. For that.
And those 24 are not Wasika District 829 students because they are part of Southwest Metro students.
Correct.
Is that number pretty steady?
Like it's, it's been increasing pretty steadily the last few years.
Okay.
Yeah. It was 12, I think, when I started.
Okay.
And some of, and some of it is increased capacity. We added another classroom, they added another teachers that could help support more kids. Some of it is just the need is increasing too.
How many years have we had the partnership with them here?
So it used to be Wasika County off campus. Go to the, would you go to the next slide? So it used to be Wasika County off campus and that's been there since I think the late 90s, that Wasika County off campus has been here. We've been with Southwest Metro, we changed with, we, we became associate members with them in 2019, I think it was the year before I came. And then in 2021, 22, Linda and Heather were trying to be the administrator of that program as well as serve our kids and it wasn't working. So we said, if we're going to be a member, you got to do your own, have your own leadership. You got to run the program. We can't be running your program for you if we're going to be here. So then as of 21, 22, they have their own administrator that comes in there. So it's working that way. Yeah. Yep.
And we, we have, we have to keep students in there until they're 21 years old, is that correct?
So Southwest Metro, that program, no, that program you do, you age out of when you would get to be a 17, 18 years old, then you would move to a different program. So the 18 through 22, it's now 18 through 22 now, through is, is what's called a transition services. And so we would not keep a, we would not have a 21-year-old in that same, in that setting. We change them to that transition setting, which is either offsite if they can't be in a setting safely or onsite, which is what most of our kids we have here are, are doing job, job internships and things like that, transitions.
If, if a student in their IEP is in the level four program and is determined that that no longer meets their needs, what's next?
There isn't a whole lot. It's hospitalization or incarceration a lot of times. That's the next step. Because the school district doesn't have the, Southwest Metro being the school district doesn't have that option. They can't tell them, we can't have you anymore. They can go through all the discipline, you can expel them, then a year they'll come, but later they'll come back and do their thing. So there really isn't compulsory, I mean, we have compulsory instruction, we can't just say, sorry, we can't serve you. So it's working with families to try to figure out what the best fit is. It, it's, it's a little bit of a myth when you think about that we don't discipline special education kids. They're still held to the same applicable rules and, and laws and expectations that we have. We just have what's called a manifestation meeting if they, if they have an issue. If it's due to their disability, then we have to look at what their setting is, what their supports are. If it's just because they did that, then they're subject to whatever consequence that could be. So we could, we expel a kid if we had to from time to time, but you no longer can, they're just not gone. So something to think about.
Okay.
And I think that's good. I think it's a good thing. You don't throw kids away, right? You just got to figure out what the next step is, right? What that is. I would say that student needs have risen, you know, and a lot of students that were previously served in setting three are needing a more restrictive setting. And so we're seeing a higher demand, like you asked Alyssa, we're seeing a higher demand for setting four and we have some of that could be, well, it's just the world we live in. I firmly believe that the students in 2023 are not any different than the kids that were 25 years ago. I would say the world they live in is vastly different than it was 25 years ago. And so their, their environmental pressures, their family pressures, why, why does that happen? I don't know, but that's, that's something we're seeing in, in, in real life for that. And we do regularly have review that. So the students IEP team, at least annually, if not more, is consistently reviewing the placement in special education services and where they need to be, because the law still does require us to have a student in the least restrictive environment that they possibly can be in to be successful. So we do have, it doesn't happen as often as I think we would love it to be in theory, but there is an opportunity where students are moving back and forth. So if students have gone to setting four, have the opportunity to receive the intervention, receive the services, then go back to the high school and do something like that in small bits and pieces. It, I wish it happened more than it did, but it is something that we look at regularly.
Is that most of the students' goals is to get, like, do they want to get back into the high school? Is that where the junior high or?
I don't know that, I don't know that I could speak for every student if they want to or not, that's the, our goal.
Okay.
Right, to get them back to with their peers and with their regular school setting, right? To be successful in a, in a setup for life and in a setting that's not without the supports they have, but also we have students that really thrive with that level of support and that level of almost direction in a day for that. The next one there. So one thing that I think about too, that I think is interesting is what is the impact to our building? And we've, I've had a lot of conversations in the last year or so about this with some board members, but also with community members, staff members talking about, what does it mean to have Southwest Metro here? And a couple of things that I, and we need to be thinking about is because Southwest Metro is subject to all of our, they're attached to our K-12 building. So all of our applicable, particularly fire marshal codes apply. So when you think about why that matters is because typically if you have a standalone setting four program, you can do some different things with door locks, you can do some different, and you have to use sprinkler systems and all that kind of things to make it legal, but you can essentially, it, it feels a little bit more institutional than if you're in a regular school. And some things that we'd have to really invest in and really can't do as a K-12 facility to be able to, to be able to do some of those things. So sometimes I get frustrated as a superintendent and particularly living here in this building, because if we have a student running around the building who is in crisis or is in having a concern escalate, I think about, well, why did they, how do they get out of the classroom, right? Well, because you can't lock them in by, by the, by the, by the fire code in, in some ways. And so we're working through that. So, but that's just one thing that think, that is an issue. Now, I would say that this school year and since the first, the first week and a half of school was challenging and we've had little, if any disruptions in the last several years, some weeks, some of that's because there's only four or five students here at any given day, so they've made some adjustments based on what we've asked them to do, which was good. It does follow all district emergency plans and procedures, so all evacuation plans, fire drills, everything, they're, they're attached to our, to our app for all of our emergency planning. They modify as needed for students' disabilities. That's been another learning, another little bit of a learning curve this year is that they have a new administrator in Southwest Metro and with, with the best of intentions, she started telling us, this is what we're going to do for emergency plans. And I said, no, I don't think so. That's, that's not how it works. You're a tenant here. And so here's what our plan is. Now, how do we modify it for your students as opposed to we all have to do what they do? Which, again, she came from a setting where she was the only game in the, in the building, so they got to decide that. So, and she's been good to work with on that.
What is the student to staff ratio in this building?
They have, right now they have one teacher because they're, they're in the hiring process for two more. So there would be three teachers if they were fully staffed. That's part of why there's only four or five kids here. Then we have three para professionals and a social worker slash administrator, who also halftime, is halftime administrator. So five adults right now.
So it's, okay.
Four to five kids. Yeah.
Would you say five for five?
Mm-hmm.
So one-to-one range?
Pretty much one-to-one. Yeah. Now, when, if they had all 24 kids here, they'd probably have 12 staff members, so it'd be about two-to-one for that.
Can I also just clarify for the people watching that we're talking about central building and it's considered a K-12 building because we have preschool here, we have school age care and we have the ALC here. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah. Yeah. We do, they, they do limit or eliminate, this does not mean to sound condescending to anybody, but we do limit or eliminate interaction with their programs. You know, they're, they're a pretty self, they've got a kitchen in there, they've got, you know, a bathroom in there, they separate, separate entry and exit rooms, they've got safety procedures in place. During the school day, the, during the regular school day, the only way students can exit out of Southwest, we've made this change now, is that they can exit out of the building. They can't get into the hall. So the egress is out of the building, not into the hall. So that's part of why the issue is, we had the first, we have students that may be having some escalation in the hallway, they don't have that right now very often because they're usually just, if they get outside, they get outside. And then we, they can't get in because the building's secure everywhere else. And so just nobody lets them in. And then the staff will support them and get them to calm down and get them back to where they need to go. So we've got some procedures in place we've changed for that. We did some modification to the space this last spring. We added, basically we, we added some walls, we created essentially now in that classroom space, they have, I would say, four classrooms worth of space in there. One is more of a, a workroom, kind of a small, almost an office-y type size-wise. The other three are pretty good-sized rooms. And so they're able to help students spread out and, and get spaced out with that, so.
If we didn't have that program here, where would we have to help get the kids to?
We would, we would either.
Because I would assume we would have to be available to get them elsewhere, like Janesville or New Richland.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, yes, right. We would, we would, they would end up being back in our setting three programs.
Okay.
Until we could get them into like a, a Jordan or we could get them into Chaska or something like that.
Those would be the two closest.
Yeah, if you go the other direction, I think something on the, the Zambro, Mazepa.
Yep.
Southwest Metro goes that west, right? There's other programs to the east.
Is there one down by Austin too?
Uh, there used to be one down Austin, yep. And I think the Austin Albert Lee has a agreement down there.
She just built it not too long ago, right? Same thing with the Zambroda one.
Right.
And those run pretty much at capacity or?
Yeah.
Okay.
They do.
So when people are asking like, why do we have this setting four here? If they're not in that setting four, they're setting three, which means they're in with the rest of our, like, general student population.
Or they're on the bus for a couple hours a day, so to get to a program that, that could serve.
If you can find room for them, but until you find room for them, they're not getting the support they need in that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unfortunately, those programs face the same staffing challenges we do. And so if there's not a teacher, then you can't, you can't take more kids in those, in those programs. So they would be back in our, in our building. I think that, but, but it, but it does serve our students well. I think if there's any issue that I think we have in Wasika is just the fact that because it's, it's attached to the central building, we run into conflict with other programs. Another great example, Katie, she's the administrator for Southwest Metro, came to me last week and said, or a week, two weeks ago and said, we're thinking of going to more of an 11-month, 11-month schedule, starting August 1st and going through the end of June. Said, okay, good luck getting your teacher to do that, but okay, fine. But.
For Southwest Metro, thinking of that, so they have staff in this building?
Well, she, well, she was, she was throwing that idea out there and I said, okay, well, here's the, there, we have a lot more students in this building during the summer because of childcare, I think, so it would be a, that's, we have, we'd have a lot to think about. And then I think, I think the conversation died with their staff with that, but at the same time, it's like, that's the impact of being in the building here because it would, I said, I'm not necessarily saying no way you can't do that, but there'd be a lot more than just, oh yeah, let's just go do that. There's a lot to think about. It would impact them, actually would impact our operations here more if they did that even, even as does now. There's more kids here in the summer than there is during the school year for our school age care programs. So, but one of the things I've been, I've been thinking about, I think the, the long-term goal for us is the program serves our kids well, serves our community well. I just think we need to, we need to look at another space potentially down the road to have a, a building that's set up for our setting four program or a space in a building, whatever that might be. And so, you know, I've just done some preliminary conversations, I haven't even, kind of put the little bit of the feeler out there that I'm looking, I haven't even had a conversation with anybody yet, about is there leased space we should be considering that we could use for that, for that building, for that program? Because it would allow them to run their program with a little less, I mean, of course, they're nervous too. They're, they're, they don't want students disrupting the rest of the school, but they want to make sure their kids get what they need. So they're, they want to be able to give them the space just to relax and sit down in the hallway and calm down. It's hard to do that when the superintendent's saying, can we go back to regular yet? Can we open the doors yet? How are you feeling now? How are you doing? That's hard to do, right? And so I think that's the next step is looking at that. And, and financially, that would be a whole lot different for us because essentially we would partner with Southwest Metro. And I don't know exactly how they do it in our districts, but there is a way we can combine operations to be able to share a cost of a leased space with them to be able to do that. And then also, I think that's something we've talked about as part of our facilities conversation is those rooms really are the ideal rooms if we were to add like an infant toddler childcare to our care program here in Wasika. That would be, there's three great spaces plus an office area down there that potentially, and I have, I have told Katie that I've been thinking about that, so it's not going to come to a shock to her if someone asks her about it, they saw it on the, on the video. But those are just kind of ongoing conversations and potential use of the space when we think about the addition of moving parts, because I don't think it would serve us well not to have that program accessible to Wasika kids. But I think we do need to think about have, given them their own space to, to be what they, what they can be.
So is it, would I, what, what is the, we would still have ALC here?
Correct. Yep. Well, that would be, that's, that's a, an idea. ALC would love to have their own space too, you know? But then we'd have an emptier building here, which whole floor right now that they occupy.
So question, when you're saying that we would share the cost of the leased space if, if they left this building, we have a partnership with them, but they're also their own independent school district. So if they're their own district and their own entity, why do, why would we pay their lease?
Is that our problem?
Yes.
It's our, it's our problem because we, we would, we're paying tuition billing for our students to go there.
So we're paying for our students to go there? That comes out of our budget?
Does cost us somewhat, right?
Um, but I still don't understand where the lease payment comes in.
Well, it's, there's, right now, we own the, right now, this is our building.
So they're, they're operating lease-free, so that, then our expense increases?
They pay us a lease right now.
Okay.
So potentially, we, we say, hey, go to their place. They say, yeah, we'd love to be there. We can't, we can't afford to pay the extra lease, so we're not going to go there. So do we decide, maybe, you probably should go there. So I want to help kick in on some of that too. I haven't got, got that far down the road yet. I just know that there's partnerships they use to help motivate different spaces.
Okay.
Yeah. We're, we're a, we're a weird, a different entity here because we share, we provide the space for them and some, most districts don't do that. So how do you get to that next?
Okay.
Next spot.
So we could just say, you figured it out, it's your thing, but then that may not facilitate them being here, and then we introduce new problems because we have to, we just wouldn't have them anymore.
They could pull that all together?
They could. We, we could. I mean, there, it's a little bit of a complicated agreement because, you know, we, for example, they want to do these modifications to the space. Well, it's our building, and so we deal with the contractor, we deal with the, the opportunity to get it done. And then we said, you got to operate within this, because they're just going to pass the cost on to us, whatever it is. So it's going to be with, we got to keep it to this parameter. And then, then there are people come down and they want something a little extra, a little extra, and Colin's got to say, no, it's not what the budget was, we're not doing that. And so it's a, it's a partnership, but it's also a coexistence, put it that way. That part of it's a little complicated with the finances.
How do we get funding for this, for these students versus funding for high school students? I mean, how, how is this funded from the state and the federal government?
Well, there's, there's irregular per pupil funding if they're enrolled in your district, plus there's also some special education reimbursement that happens.
Okay.
For the services they provide, which then, depending on what they, what, what we do with enrollment with Southwest Metro, that money goes to them in part or in full, depending on.
The way you say it, when it's called, it's a wash.
Yeah. Yeah. Usually.
Hopefully.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I may be getting into the weeds here a little bit, but so then when you go into like the levy funding, where we levy for all of that, how does, because that's a different school district.
Right.
So how do they?
So they would not be part of our?
They're not part of our levy.
Right. So how would they, or do they not levy?
Their day-to-day activity cost comes from their mothership.
Yeah. And, and so they, so separate from the levy we just talked about.
Right.
Is the special education reimbursement funding. The districts get to provide special education services, plus the per pupil funding that they get. So depending on if they're providing all or some of the services, that money's all routed to them.
Okay.
So almost similar to think about PSCO.
Okay.
When a student goes to PSCO, that part of their dollars goes with them to the college.
Okay.
The part of their dollars goes with them to Southwest Metro. That's how they're, how, how they're funding themselves.
Okay.